Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 5:30, and I will call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. It is our tradition to stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance, and we invite you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The city clerk will note that all council members are in person. We are continuing to be hybrid. We are in person and also...
Councilmember Workman.
I will get to that. It is in my notes. It's okay, everybody's helping. But we are conducting our meetings both in person and in hybrid. Councilmember Workman is out this evening. But the clerk will note that all council members are present in person. Thank you. So, members of the public may attend in person, or the public can also watch this meeting on burnsvilleamend.gov/meetings, or tune into Comcast, channel 16 or 859. The public can also participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join, or by calling More information is available on our meeting's webpage and in the council agenda packet. The next item on the agenda is the announcements of our upcoming meetings. Regular council meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, July 20, and Monday, August 2, at 5:30 p.m. Now, this is a change. Our meetings are always on Tuesday, but because we have Night to Unite on August 3, and it's always the first Tuesday of August, our meeting will be on Monday, August 2, at 5:30 p.m. So, we can all be out this year to meet with all of our neighbors throughout the community. We also have a work session that's scheduled for Tuesday, July 13, at 5:30 p.m. The next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the council on an item that is not on the printed agenda and not in application form that will be coming before us at a future date. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council? Ms. Collins, is there anyone in queue? Okay, thank you. We will then move on. The next item on the agenda is additions to the final agenda, and this is for emergency items only. City Manager Mescolli, are there any emergency items to come before the body?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Members of the council. Okay. We will then move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a group of items that's considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. However, an item on a consent agenda can be removed for a separate discussion and vote. I see that there are two members of the public who wish to speak to items on the consent agenda. Did you want them pulled? This is Mr. Octavio Chung and Mr. Woodrow Piner for item 4L. Did you want the item pulled for a separate discussion and vote? Or are you here just to make sure that the item goes through? Mister... Yes, sir. Did you want to speak to the item?
Yes.
Okay, so we will then pull 4L for a separate discussion and vote. Ms. Mescolli, is the staff need an item to be pulled?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Staff would ask that item 4D be pulled.
4D, okay. Members of the council? Okay. I would like 4I to be pulled, and not for any objections to it, but just to raise the awareness of why the infrastructure trust, infrastructure plan is so important for all of us, and because we do have projects here in Burnsville that we need transportation money for. So, I'm pulling 4I just to highlight it. Okay? So, 4L, 4D, 4L, and 4I is pulled for a separate discussion and vote. May I have a motion for the balance, please?
So moved.
Councilmember Gustafson makes the motion. Second by Councilmember Kaylee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay, and a motion carries. City Manager Mescolli, 4D is the appointments to the Parks and Natural Resources Commission and the Economic Development Commission to fill vacancies.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. We were notified today that the alternate member for the Economic Development Commission is unable to accept the appointment, and so we would ask that you take action approving the movement from the alternate member to a regular member, as well as the appointments for the PNRC, but hold on an alternate member for the Economic Development Commission until you could provide staff with some further direction on how you'd like that filled.
On the Economic Development Commission?
Correct.
Okay. Members of the council, mayor, I have a motion to adopt the balance of this and to continue the economic development appointment.
Just for clarity?
Yes.
I will, I'll make the motion and have a question. The background notes that Audrey Jansen is moving from alternate to regular.
Correct.
And Pearl Olson is a new alternate. And all you're asking is that alternate position be left open until we...
Come back.
...follow up discussion.
That's correct.
And all other noted appointments are okay, as stated?
That's, that's what staff is.
Move to approve with that amendment.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay, and a motion carries. 4L... I'm going to go to 4L, and then I'll come back to 4I. 4L is the application of MWF Properties LLC for preliminary plat approval of a two-lot subdivision to be known as Gateway Housing and variances to build to line requirements along Gateway Boulevard for proposed Lot 1 and Lot 2. Variance to the build to line along the first 50 square foot of the lot frontage on Gateway Boulevard and Pleasant Avenue for proposed Lot 1, and a variance to the minimum floor area ratio requirement for proposed Lot 1 and Lot 2 to construct a 135-unit senior apartment building and 162-unit multifamily apartment building located at the intersection of Gateway Boulevard and Pleasant Avenue. Sir, would you come to the... Yes, and give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Octavio Chung.
Yes.
Octavio, O-C-T-A-V-I-O. Last name Chung, C-H-U-N-G, and I live in Hugo, Minnesota.
Okay, and give us your complete address for the record, please.
4958 142nd Circle North, Hugo, Minnesota, 55038.
Thank you.
My name is Octavio Chung Bustamante, and I work as an organizer for Launa, Labor's International Union of North America. Launa is an organization that seeks to advance the welfare of union and non-union construction workers in Minnesota. Our members do all type of construction from demolition to concrete placement to asbestos removal. Our membership is diverse, and more than 100 members live in this city, and we represent more than 12,000 statewide members. I understand that MWF Properties is proposing an apartment project at the intersection of Gateway Boulevard and Pleasant Avenue. Our members support multifamily housing construction, and we have no objection to MWF as a developer. I'm here, however, to express concern about the conduct of Stone Pro, a contractor that has previously done work for MWF, Stone Pro, most recently at the Lexington Flats project in Eagan. Our member, our team has heard travel allegations from Stone Pro workers of wage theft and discrimination. Why are you working for the company? We also know that Stone Pro relies heavily on the H2B guest worker visa, and our investigation found that the company might shield a dozen of immigrant guest workers out of $10,000 in wages. One of the things that Stone Pro does, that we've been hearing, they bring workers with the visa, and they classify them as carpenter helpers when they are actually poor and hungry. So, there is a difference there in per hour, almost $8 per, per hour. That's one of the things that they do with the visa. Because they are, there, that's what they do, concrete work. They don't do no framing, or so much stuff that the Stone Pro does is concrete work. We also hear from workers that they, they house workers in a three-bedroom, one bathroom house in Elkhorn, Wisconsin, dozen of workers in this house. And I guess we hear that they also have one more house now in Hudson, Wisconsin. Three-bedroom, one bathroom home, I think that's a little bit too many people for, to be in this house. We talk to workers about these issues because it is our goal to protect, protect our workers and to make sure that we have a fair pay on the construction industry for our workers. No worker should be subject to wage theft or discrimination, or they should not be packed in the house like animals. I please invite you to visit www.buildbetteramend.org to find detailed information or concerns about Stone Pro. Housing is needed, but so decent fair treatment for local workers. Both can happen through this project as long as the developer uses responsible contractors. We are deeply troubled by what we have learned about Stone Pro and hope that the developer is committed to making sure that no contractor is going to engage in wage theft or exploitation. Our members want to make sure that wage theft and auto exploitation do not occur in this, in this community. We asked the city to keep wage theft prevention in mind as you consider this an auto proposed development project. So, so please use your power within the system to make sure that this type of situation don't happen here in this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Piner, did you want to speak?
And so I forgot something. My coworker was here a little bit late, and he would also like to speak, Lucas Franco. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Woodrow Piner, and I am here today as a representative of the North Central State's Regional Council of Carpenters. We represent 27,000 members plus their families, many who live here in Burnsville. Carpenters Union of 2021 and construction workers face aggressive constant attacks from elite financial and political interests who exploit workers, particularly workers of color and undocumented immigrant workers, by imposing long work hours, substandard wages in the form of cash payments, dangerous conditions combined with little or no safety equipment or training, misclassification as workers as independent contractors, and outright wage theft. At the North Central State's Regional Council of Carpenters, we have investigated and tracked this type of activity for over a decade. MWF Properties is a company we watch, and the proposed Gateway Project here in Burnsville is one we are concerned about. MWF Properties typically hires Eagle Building Company LLC as the G C to run their projects. Eagle Building Company LLC then in turn is in charge of soliciting bids from subcontractors to perform the various scopes of work on their projects. Some of the primary subcontractors directly hired by Eagle Company Building, Building Company LLC will sub that work down to lower-tier subs to actually provide the workforce needed to perform the scopes of work. On past MWF projects, workers have, workers working for these lower-tier subcontractors underneath the supervision of the primary subcontractors have reported working over 40 hours a week without overtime pay, receiving cash payments without proper withholdings, and not having workers' compensation insurance paid on all their wages to ensure protection in case of a work-related injuries. Here are some specific examples from subcontractors that have performed work on past and current MWF projects that have raised some red, red flags with the North, North Central State's Regional Council of Carpenters. Absolute Drywall Incorporated has performed work on the following MWF project. Loft at Evergreen Knoll, which is in Faribault, that's a current project. Public findings on Absolute Drywall, Inc. are as follows. U.S. Department of Labor, child labor violation, case number 1794218. U.S. Department of Labor, misclassification and wage theft of $126, $268 of overtime. Absolute settled on this in 2017. Minnesota Department of Labor, misclass registration, 2016. Minnesota Department of Labor, misclassification registration, 2018. Painting America Incorporated has performed work on the following MWF projects. Amundson Flats in Edina, which is a current project. Lexington Flats in Eagan is a current project. Rosemary Apartments in Hugo, a past project. The Boulevard in Moundsview, a past project. Red Rock Square in Newport, a past project. Public findings on Painting America Incorporated are as follows. Minnesota Department of Labor, misclass registration, finding workers misclassified as independent contractors and hiring unregistered contractors. Consent order signed by Painting America in 2019 to the Department of Labor. Wolf Construction Company Incorporated has performed, performed work on the following MWF project, projects. Lindale Flats in Bloomington, current project. Amundson Flats, Edina, a current project. Rosemary Apartments in Hugo, a past project. 108th Place in Bloomington, a past project. Sarah's and Flats in Shakopee, a past project. Public findings on lower-tier subcontractors working underneath the supervision of Wolf Construction, Construction Company, Inc. are as follows. Minnesota Department of Labor, misclass registration, MO, MO framing, 2018. Minnesota Department of Labor, misclassification registration, JMC Contracting in 2018. Minnesota Department of Labor, misclass registration, retaliation against a witness, Constante Construction, 2020. United States District Court, findings of court of sex traff, sex trafficking of a minor, virtual wrangle Torres, 2021. Merritt Drywall had performed work on the following MWF project. The Forest Oak Apartments in Forest Lake in 2016. The owners of Merritt Drywall were charged with and pled guilty to workers' comp insurance fraud and theft in 2020. These are some of the red flags that have raised concern with the North Central State's Regional Council of Carpenters in regard to the proposed Gateway Project in Burnsville. We ask you as elected officials to ask MWF, what measures are they prepared to put into place that ensures that workers will not be subjected to the previously mentioned examples of workers' exploitation? Thanks.
Don't leave. I have a question for you, Mr. Piner. Did you appear before any of the other cities when MWF projects were going through, for instance, Edina, Eagan, and some of the ones that are in process right now?
This is the first city that I have presented.
This is the first city?
Yep.
So, okay, but you have some documented violations that have been, okay?
Yep.
Very good. I'm going to be asking our attorney afterwards in terms of what, what authority we have over that? Okay, thank you. So, and I think you have another colleague that wants to speak, please. Give us your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Lucas Franco. I live at 4137 22nd Avenue, South Minneapolis, Minnesota. Thank you for having me, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I am the regional research manager for the Laborers Union of Minnesota and North Dakota. What Octavio spoke to earlier, we represent about 12,000 construction workers across the two states, as well as about 100 here in Burnsville, and our workers, members work in a wide range of work from wind farm turbines down south to multifamily housing here in the, in the metro. And I'm here tonight to echo Octavio and Woodrow's concerns with Stone Pro in particular, to give, just take a step back and give a, some context about the scale of wage theft in our region overall, and then try to provide some, some steps and some ideas forward within your jurisdiction to take action to help prevent this from happening here in Burnsville. So, in my work as research manager, I work to advocate for safe construction work sites where workers are paid fairly, treated with respect, and that they, they go home every night, safe and healthy. I spend a lot of time talking to workers that have been victims of wage theft on multifamily housing projects here in the Twin Cities. I've encountered many disturbing stories of wage theft from illegal, quote, deductions from an employee's pay, or just many situations of just refusing to pay workers after they've completed work. Unfortunately, that includes troubling stories, as Octavio mentioned, from Stone Pro. Workers had shared really awful stories about abuses they've reported seeing or suffering while working for Stone Pro, including wage theft and exploitation of the H2B visa program. Unfortunately, cases like Stone Pro are really just the tip of the iceberg. Wage theft is a deeply systematic problem in Minnesota's construction industry. A new report from the Midwest Economic Policy Institute detailed some of the scale of this problem, and it's quite jarring, actually. In Minnesota, about 30,000 construction workers are misclassified or paid off the books, accounting for almost a quarter of the workforce, 23% of the total workforce. So, just stunning numbers. These illegally employed construction workers earn 36%, about 30,000 annually in combined wages and fringe benefits. The state annually loses $136 million in state tax revenues due to construction payroll tax fraud, $65 million in lost income taxes, $13 million in unemployment insurance contributions, lost unemployment insurance contributions, and $58 million in lost workers' compensation premiums. Victims of wage theft are also, also victims of other forms of exploitation, as, as Woodrow mentioned. And I'm here ultimately tonight to ask you to help prevent wage theft from happening here in Burnsville, as, as many other cities have been working to do. Stone Pro's conduct has been reported to state and federal authorities, and we hope that they will be able to investigate and take action. So, that is good news. But the state and federal government can't solve this problem alone. Local governments need to do their part to end wage theft and exploitation, just as local governments work to prevent other crimes. Brooklyn Park recently decided to become part of the solution when the council deferred consideration of a multifamily housing project after hearing similar concerns about the developers' past use of Stone Pro and other contractors. The city of Burnsville can follow Brooklyn Park's lead by ensuring that developers take appropriate prevention measures rather than looking the other way. This is about using our power and the power within our system to build better communities. We have to hold each other accountable, and I just ask that you please exercise due diligence to ensure that the proposed project employs responsible subcontractors and doesn't make a bad situation worse. I'd be happy to provide further information or answer any questions either now or in the future. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Franco. Councilmember Schultz has a question. Mr. Franco?
So, you're using the term wage theft. What do you mean when you say that? Because I don't want to misinterpret, because I know what I mean when I say it, but what do you mean when you say wage theft?
I think it's a, and thank you for that question. Generally, it's a, it's a fairly encompassing term that can include misclassifications or classifying as a, an independent contractor when in fact, a worker that's working on that project is, is, should be considered an employee. That's kind of one end of the spectrum. On the other end of the spectrum is sort of, I think, what folks classically think of as wage theft of just not getting paid for the work that you do. If you work eight hours, your employer refuses to pay you either for that full amount or only for four hours. So, it does encompass a, a wide range from misclassification to, to direct stealing of, of work and, and non-payment of wages.
And since these persons are on a guest worker visa, the workers that you're speaking with, do they feel that they cannot go to authorities, or why are they not pursuing the wages that are lost? There is a barrier, so what is that barrier?
I think that's an excellent question. Again, the H2B visa program is incredibly challenging because workers, their ability to be in the United States on that program, that visa is entirely tied to an employer, so they hold an incredible amount of power. And what we've unfortunately seen is both due to a, a lack of investigators for cases and also just deep, deep fear from workers about retaliation, that, that people are very scared to come forward. And what Octavio mentioned and what we've documented has to do with misclassification because for the H2B visa program, for each classification of worker, like a carpenter helper, there's a wage rate tied to that type of work, so that people bringing in H2B visa workers ought to be paying the, the sort of prevailing rate in the area. What we see so often is that workers come in on a kind of cheaper classification, so carpenter helper might be 18 bucks an hour as that pay rate, but then they have these workers doing all kinds of other types of work that shouldn't be in that category, and workers just feel utterly silenced, that they don't have an ability to come forward because they're deeply scared when it comes to the, the H2B program.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gustafson?
You used the term illegally imported. Could you tell me what you mean by that?
Thank you for that question. If I did use that term, I don't think it's entirely what I meant, in that the H2B visa program is a legal visa program that, you know, it certainly has a, a purpose and a reason and can provide a really vital source of, of workers when there is workforce shortages. So, I, I would say the program, I don't see it as illegal, it's a very valid program. What unfortunately we see in, what we've seen in the case of, at least we've seen workers allege in the case of, of Stone Pro is, once workers arrive, there's misclassification of what they're doing, being crammed into a small house, many workers in a small house. So, it's more internal problems with the program rather than the program being illegal. So, if I use that, I apologize.
I have a, I have a follow-up on that. Do you, do you have a solution for this? You're talking about prevailing wage. Are you talking about it should be union workers doing this, or just prevailing wage, whether it's union or not?
Well, in terms of the solution, so the, I would say the big reason we're here tonight is to, to ask you as the city council, the mayor, to provide a layer of scrutiny and accountability for the developer, to make sure the things that we have been seeing in other cities don't happen here in Burnsville. And I think, you know, what has happened in, in Brooklyn Park in terms of pushing the, the developer to get the assurances that the city council feels they need, that there's, there won't be those sort of problems happening, I think is a really good example. In terms of solutions to the H2B visa program, which I should note is just one form of the problems that we're seeing with this developer, there's, there's other problems that were, or not developer, but, but subcontractor, there's other problems as well, but... But we've put forward solutions and ways that the H2B visa program can be fixed. Of course, that's out of your hands, this is a federal program. But I think it's about the extra layer of accountability and guarantees from the developer that what has happened with the subcontractor in other cities isn't going to happen here. And, you know, perhaps that means that they're not working on this project because we've documented really troubling things with this contractor, as well as Woodrow mentioned, other contractors. So we'd love to provide an overview of the concerns that we have and the specific subcontractors that we've seen really devastating problems with.
Thank you. Kind of a follow-up with our attorney for real quick.
Yeah.
Can a city even dictate prevailing wage of taxpayer dollars or not, part of this project?
In my opinion, no. And contractor licensing was assumed by the state several years ago, and we were told not to regulate in that field as well. So on both of those issues, we don't have as much authority as purported.
Can you speak to the Brooklyn Park?
Mayor, I'm not familiar with that, but as far as its application tonight, you have a land use matter.
That's right.
We don't have any regulations that they're in violation of. If the council's interested in looking at adopting new regulations or studying this issue in more detail, it would be a separate issue. And my recommendation would be apply our standards and our regulations that we have currently in place with this application that came to you unanimously from the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
It's on consent, it's fully in compliance with our existing regulations. Wage theft, mistreatment of employees, those types of issues are broader issues that wouldn't necessarily be tied just to this application. So if you want to look at those issues and those, study that matter in more detail, I think it's certainly within the council's prerogative to do that. But I wouldn't hold up this application tonight in its current, as you know, we do have a 60-day rule, and we have to process these things as they come through.
And tonight, what they have is a preliminary plat approval. That's all we have here tonight. Yes, Mr. Franco.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, and I would ask, you know, I think what we're trying to do is explain the issues and the concerns and the problems we've seen. And I would just ask that you as the council and yourself as the mayor to ask for guarantees, that this sort of behavior that we've seen in the past doesn't happen here in Burnsville. And then if something does, God forbid, happen, that you use your bully pulpit to highlight the problem of wage theft and what needs to be done to fix it.
Thank you, Mr. Franco. Thank you, Mr. Chung and Mr. Piner for your testimony and to bringing this issue and highlighting it for us this evening. One of the things in the city of Burnsville is that we are a welcoming community. The other is that we have values. We are the stewards of the public's trust. And one of the things that we also value is ethics. And so what you're calling us to do is to look at the ethics, not only of ourselves and the people and the businesses that are here, but the businesses who come into Burnsville. And so you're saying here are some practices that are deemed to be illegal, alleged by you and your partners, and we hear you. But tonight, we're going to approve the preliminary plat for this project. But you raise a very concerning issue with hats to do with human rights, and also if there are wage theft. And I don't like hearing the fact that there are cash payments, which means that these payments then are not being recorded for state and the federal government in terms of income. So these are troubling allegations. And we need to take a look at all of that, and it appears that Brooklyn Park has done something. We'll look and see what Brooklyn Park has done. But tonight, we're here to approve a preliminary plat. But thank you for raising the issue because I want to make sure that the businesses that come in to Burnsville are going to be good businesses and have good ethical practices and have the ability to be caring about the people whom they hire to do the work. Because if they take care of those people, that product that's going to be built in the city of Burnsville will be a product that will last and will have good quality work into it. So thank you for raising the issue to the three of you. But tonight, we have to address the plat. That's what we have before us. But you raised some good issues that we will need to address.
Okay, thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Franco. Okay. Members of the council, the gentlemen have highlighted some issues that perhaps we need to just have a conversation about at a work session. But tonight, we're asked to approve a preliminary plat for MWF properties.
Just one clarification before we move forward. What are the steps for this particular project that will happen over the next weeks or months that will we have them before us again with any sort of design review? Or is this the last stop before the building begins?
I don't think so.
Think this is it?
Yeah, I think this is it. They're within all, they meet all, they meet everything. City manager Lee?
I'm going to look to, I believe that's a true statement, but I'll ask.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah, because in looking at the background, they're in compliance with everything that have to do with the HOC Transit Oriental Development District. So they meet all of it. They're just here for the plat.
So the best we could do is bring these concerns forward, share this video with them, the gentleman who spoke, share those comments with them for their information.
Yeah. And the issues they raised are troubling, not only on our level, but on the state level and on the federal level.
Thank you, I'll move to approve that.
Councilmember Keely makes the motion.
I will second the motion to approve, but I do want to add on that I'm very troubled with what I just heard as well. And it's, anytime I hear about anyone being taken advantage of, especially immigrants that come into this country, that work in this country, we see it all the time with housing in all kinds of different areas. We closed down an entire apartment complex that did that years ago because of that type of activity. I don't know what legal action we can take here, but if there's anything we can possibly do to help the judiciary take action on companies like that, I would certainly be in favor of that.
Yeah. I think we all are concerned with what we heard tonight. And I'd like to find out what Brooklyn Park, city manager Mastoli, and attorney Jamnik, understand what Brooklyn Park did so that we can have more information. Councilmember Schultz. So we are in discussion, because there's a motion in a second.
And I'm not saying that the information is not accurate. I'm saying I don't have information, and I do like to look at documentation before I would, you know.
Yeah.
Because, you know, saying that someone's acting illegally and fraudulently and that type of thing, like that's not something to, you know, to jump to lightly. I mean, you know, the cash payments, I mean, you know, construction. But yes, if you have workers and you have an agreed-upon wage, pay them, just pay them. You know, we do expect that our businesses and our residents, that we engage with one another in good faith, and that we act in good faith, and we keep our agreements. Like, that's just an expectation of anything. So, yeah, I'm ready, I'm ready to vote on this item.
Well, yeah, and that's why I said when Mr. Franco and the others made their statement that these are allegations. They're alleged until we have more information about all of that. So there's a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay, and a motion carries. Thank you again for coming in and for presenting before us. Okay. The next item is the resolution to authorize the application to United States Department of Transportation for rebuilding America's infrastructure with sustainability and equity. That's the Raze Grant for Highway 13 and Nicolet Avenue intersection improvements. Members of the council, we have been working on this intersection for such a long time, and it's been studied. And so there is a letter that I will be sending to Secretary Mayor Buttigieg. We always want to make sure that everybody remembers that he was, was mayor. And so, and so there will be a letter that goes out, and I will sign it with regard to our request for this grant. And if you saw in the background, it, it's a 20% local match, and that is going to be covered by Dakota County and Mendat and us. But the bulk of the money is going to come from the federal government. And if you look around town and all of the work that we've been engaged in, we have 42 is one of the projects that we're going to have to be working on. And then, of course, just recently, we have another one of our bridges on the Parkway that you brought to our attention, Councilmember Keely, that someone noticed that concrete was falling off of it. So is there structural issues there? So there are issues around here, and so I want to make sure that people understand how important this infrastructure bill is, not only for our country, but for the city of Burnsville. So with that, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that we're going to go after this grant because it's going to help us with this work that we've been trying to do for such a long time for Highway 13 and the Nicolet interchange, especially when there's more and more residents, and we need to safely cross that street to get to MBTA and also for the Orange Line. So with that, I'd like a motion to adopt this grant application.
I'd make a motion to approve with gusto that we go after any grants that we can possibly get for our transportation infrastructure.
Thank you, Councilmember Keely.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Gustafson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay, and a motion carries. Thank you very much. We now move on to the regular agenda, and on the regular agenda, members of the public and council, tonight, our police department Behavioral Health Unit is going to be giving us an update. Our police chief, Tanya Schwartz, is going to be presenting, and I think she is also going to be recognizing the members of our Behavioral Health Unit who have been busy ever since its inception, but before that, you were busy, but now we have a program that is working so well. Good evening, chief, and welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It's exciting to be here. I appreciate the opportunity to give you an update on the work we've been doing. And I am going to do some introductions, but just want to talk a little bit first, just kind of a reminder, if you recall, we put this work together just based out of need that we had going on across the city, and really wanted to look at how can we address the needs of individuals who are suffering from mental health and mental illness in our community, and then a wide range of other social needs that people experience that we're responding to, such as homelessness or chemical dependency and things like that. So we really believe strongly in the work that we're doing. Our co-responder approach has been really bringing a lot of value to the community, and so I just want to call that out, we'll talk more about that. But I want to just kind of ground us in, you know, the work that we do here with this co-responder model is all in line with our mission at the police department of working together to make a difference through excellence in policing, right? Our core values of who we are, honor, integrity, courage, knowledge, excellence. We hold those things near to us. A lot of our work, everything we try to do, we think about procedural justice in mind. And so how we're treating people, treat people with respect, listen to what people have to say, make fair decisions, explain our actions. This is the culture, right, of who we are, and this is what makes us a professional police department. And so I'm really proud of that. I'm proud that all of this work aligns with the city's organizational values of innovation, collaboration, and excellence, and the council's strategic priorities behind safety and community engagement. So this work is, you know, all across our, not just our department, but city staff. We're all working together on this, so you'll get to hear some more about that. And obviously, there's a lot of discussion around mental health calls, how people are responding, not just us and local government, but how the county is responding, how the state is, you know, people across the state, and then how agencies across the country are really responding to this crisis. So just want to call that out, so kind of as a reminder of where we started, because we revisited, well, we visited back in October of 2020. So we've been doing this work really consistently since January. And so just want to let you know, there's been a lot of passionate discussions around mental health, right, and that work that we're doing. And so there isn't one right answer to this work, but I'm hoping that, you know, we have started a model of what is working for our community, and I think there's a framework here. Not everyone is going to agree, every community is different, every city is different, and every department is different, and the needs in communities are different. So the focus for us, for the work that we're doing here, that our teams are doing, it's what is working for Burnsville, what's best for the Burnsville community, what's going to work with them, with our teams. And so I'm proud of that, proud of what they've accomplished. I'm excited for you to hear the work that they've been doing. And again, just that collaboration across departments, and there's just a lot of need. There's still so much more need out there, and we've just begun to really get into this work. So before I, I have a little bit more to say before I turn it over to Sergeant Yakalov and the rest of our team, but I want to do some introductions, just so you know who is here. So Sergeant Max Yakalov, I think you all know him, he is our sergeant. He is overseeing our Community Engagement and Behavioral Health Unit. So, you know, we took this work, as you know, we didn't increase staffing at the time, so we took this full-time work and we put more full-time work on one unit already. So he's leading that team. And then we have Holly Helm, our crime analyst, who is here with us tonight. She's also going to be doing some presenting on some statistics, which we've started to gather, which I think will be really important as we go along. And then I want to recognize that Officer Erica Houston is here. She is also working on our Behavioral Health Unit. And then Amy Johnson from Dakota County Social Services. She is key to this program, to our co-responder model, and we have her with us three days a week, always pushing to have her with us five days a week and on a full-time basis. So been having lots of conversations, spirited conversations with the county, our partners there, and they've been very great so far in allowing Amy to work with us because, again, there's a lot of need with the work we're doing. So I'm going to turn it over to Max in just a moment, but we're going to go a little bit over background, so give you guys kind of a little bit more background, talk about those objectives. So just kind of re-center where we're at, where we're going, what we want to accomplish with what we're doing, give you a timeline, so kind of what we've accomplished since January to this point, talk about some process updates, some statistics, and then the case studies, which I think are really just bring the value to the work. And it's something that you can't put always a data point on, but I think it is really impactful. And so I'm looking forward to Max being able to share those stories. And then I'll come back and talk a little bit more about what's needed for long-term success, you know, from my perspective, from the team's perspective, and how do we move forward and continue this really good work that we're doing. So with that.
And you're going to introduce Captain Stinger?
Well, yes, you know what, I missed him, I'm sorry, yes. And Captain Don Stinger, and he oversees our division at the top end of things. So thank you, Don. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for helping me, see, I need help too, right? Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to Max, and he's going to walk you through a bunch of slides, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. Welcome, it's good to, always good to see you.
Yeah, you too, Mayor. Members of the city council, Ms. Mayor, and city manager Lee, thank you again. I got to start by apologizing right off the bat. That's loud. Some of you guys know that I went through chemo treatments and radiation, so I have to have gum in my mouth, so please, you know, accept that. I'm not trying to be, you know, Miss, I got to chew in order to keep the saliva going in my mouth, so in order for me to talk, again, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, just part of the gig, as some of us know well. Like Chief Schwartz said, my job here today for you guys is to kind of give you an idea of what we've been doing, and again, it's not just me, the guys and gals are behind me. They're really doing all the work, I'm just kind of the talking head in front of you to kind of give you the understanding of what we've done. So as you guys know, we restructured in January. we restructured in January. We also changed our name. If you recall, back in October, when Chief Schwartz talked about, we started as a mental health unit, and when we actually started dealing with some of these folks, and with other departments, actual police departments that have these units, they actually suggested that we change the name to Behavioral Health. Two reasons that happened. One is we want to make sure that we don't label anybody, and we don't kind of put that barrier up when we show up. And the other reason is we want to kind of have a bigger umbrella so we can deal with different folks, right? Whether it's mental illness, whether it's alcohol, whether it's drug issues, or whether it's homelessness, or maybe something else, maybe it's financial problems. So we want to be able to cover all of those things, not just mental health specific. We mainly deal with, right now, with mental health illness, and some of it is unsheltered living conditions, but not a lot. I will show you guys the data here in a second. Our goal here is to basically kind of connect with people, respect them, and give them resources so they, they don't call 911s, they don't call the police. So that way, we can actually connect them with things that actually be helpful versus having a patrol officer respond or us respond and kind of give them a kind of vanilla answer, if that makes sense to you. We also partner up with different units throughout the county and different organizations, which I think is awesome. Anything from Dakota County Crisis to our fire department and other mental health professionals within the city and in the county. Some of it, we went as far as actually getting hold of people out of state to see what actually works, right? Because again, as you guys know, we're starting things from scratch, so there's really no necessarily an outline or a manual for us to do. So we're just trying to do our best, we're trying to come up with the best product that we can do. Any questions on that? So far, so good?
So, really well done.
All right. So what you're seeing right now in front of you is kind of the background. What I want to kind of point out, and I think it's important to know, is what you're seeing in the graphs is strictly mental health related calls that patrol officers and us took so far this year. Again, to point out the numbers, in the mid this year so far, we're at three-hundred-and-ninety-eight calls for service. Why that important for you guys to know is that's, that's strictly mental health calls. That does not include anything like check the welfare calls, or disturbances, or suspicious person, or medicals, or thefts, because sometimes thefts turn into a mental health issue, right? Because we're trying to figure out why people are actually doing the theft, because there might be some of a symptom of an actual larger problem. The example was today, as you and I were talking about that earlier. We also projected, based on what Holly said, we're supposed to hit roughly about seven-hundred-and-ninety-six calls of that type by the end of the year. As you guys can see, that's by far, so far, is the biggest in the last eleven years. So we're kind of projected to continue to increase. A little more statistics. Again, what we're trying to show here is the idea between the actual police calls that are taking place versus mental health calls. Again, same concept, we're just trying to show the increase. Again, I just want to point out that we went from 2010 at about evenly at a hundred percent to now to 2021, we're at two-hundred-and-seventy-four percent increase. That's quite a bit. As you guys recall, back in October, again, when Chief Schwartz presented, we basically kind of came up with some of the objectives that we want to accomplish. Some of them were increases, some of them were decreases. So for example, the preventative response to those suffering levels of health and crisis response stuff, the way we accomplish that so far is conducting follow-up and coordinating care, which is really important, and resources to minimize the repeat calls for service. So our goal really is to, again, to kind of convert, basically allow people and give them resources so they don't call 911 when they're in crisis. We're trying to kind of intervene prior to the crisis, and that way they can kind of deal with some of the issues themselves, or they have a person they can go to, so 911 is not the, the only option. From the safety standpoint, some of the things we've done, and Holly will talk more about that, we developed the threat assessment for patrol area officers, background checks on the, on the subjects we're dealing with. So we know when we go out who we're actually dealing with and their capabilities. Some of them have criminal history, some of them have very violent criminal history, same thing with drug issues. And then we also came up with subject advisories. Really what that is, is for our patrol officers to understand and know who these people are and where they're at in their area, so they can understand how to deal with them. And Holly and I, I think we'll, we'll kind of take team that here in a little bit, and giving you an idea of some of the things that go into these advisories. Diversion part of the mental health treatment, we incorporate Dakota County Stabilization Services, that's what Amy is part of. We also paired up with Allied Services to connect subject with insurance, for example. We'll talk about that in the actual case point that we've done. Timely appointments, which is a key here, as it stands right now, because of COVID and lack of beds, and lack of resources, medical resources, we're looking at anywhere between six to seven months' wait for that person to actually see some sort of medical professional, which is not acceptable in our case. Same thing with medication. Officer awareness and education, we've been doing really well, we're trying to, again, advise officers on how to deal with these specific folks. Been keeping up on the caseload, as you all know, there's a lot of updates in the system nationwide, statewide, and even sometimes in the citywide. We've been doing our best trying to keep up on that. Developing training for officers, that's something that is in the process. We're not quite there yet, just because of the massive volume of calls that we're experiencing. We have a very little time to kind of develop some of that stuff, but we're working on it as, as fast as we can. Community relations and public trust, that's been a key, and it's been an important part. We're trying to connect with the community, highlighting our unit and objectives of the different events. Some of you guys are present, and some of our outreach. Our attire, as you guys can see what I'm wearing, it's more approachable. We drive a marked squad car, so that way it's not as wow in your face. We're there to do a job, but we're trying to kind of minimize the, that whole uniform part of that, and our purpose behind it. What questions do we have on that so far?
You're doing very well.
So far, so good?
Yes.
All right, very good. Let's talk about the decrease part. We've talked a lot about and focused a lot of our time on conflict between the police and people experiencing mental health issues. It is a, a, a big deal. And I want to point out to you guys that by our training and by our attire and the way we handle calls, out of four-hundred-and-thirty-seven, excuse me, four to a hundred and thirty-seven contacts we've had, we only had to go hands-on with somebody twice so far as a unit, which I think is awesome, right? The other two times that we did, it had to be done, because we want to make sure that the person didn't hurt themselves or somebody else in public. But number speaks for itself, so we can take our time, we can slow things down, and we're able to talk our way through most situations, not all, but most. Repeat calls for service involving people with mental health issues and crises, that was one of our objectives, to try and decrease that. Again, we're connecting subjects with resources, providing direct contact. We're there for them. So we're at the point now, where either a family member or a person of, that we're working with, they actually call us directly, whether our desk line, or they call Amy for help versus actually dialing 911. So we're, we're establishing that relationship. Even when we do show up on calls, a lot of times they know us by name, or they know us by face. So that way we can actually have that report going right away versus not knowing who these folks are. Community impact on untreated mental illness. Again, what we're trying to accomplish here is a multidisciplinary collaboration between the police and social work, family and neighbors, and we'll talk about that in, in the case study again, because the case that I want to present to you guys today, it kind of encompasses all of that, right? And we'll talk about that later. Again, same thing with the judicial system. We're trying to reduce number of people going into our system by basically kind of having an interdiction, so little violations such as theft doesn't happen, because we can at least, and if they do, we can actually, again, connect them to resources that are appropriate, so they don't go down in that path of violence. Just a timeline. We've talked about that before. We just want to show you, folks, where we're at. We started again in January. By February, we started to kind of change the name, again, from Mental Health to Behavioral Health Unit. Amy joined us in March. By April, we had an operational manual that we've developed as a group. That took a little bit, and the county partners wanted to have something on paper, so that took a little bit longer than we expected, anticipated, but it worked out. In May, we began taking more complicated cases, which we'll talk about that here tonight. We had our first community event in June, and here we are in July. All right. So the process, as far as we talked about the report and follow-up, I think somebody before the council number began, our council meeting happened today, some of you guys were asking, like, how does this work, right? And kind of the long-winded answer to this is when we get referrals, and the referrals can come from either a patrol officer by email, or by a report, or sometimes family members call, that's how we get our referrals, that's what we call them. So every day, daily, Officer Houston and Officer Arthur Turnbull and myself, we actually go through every police report that we get throughout that twenty-four hour period. And we actually take out all of the calls that could be potentially mental health-related. After that, we actually go to do a threat assessment. And really what that means for you, it gives us idea on how to basically prioritize the caseload that we have. Why is that important is because sometimes some of these folks are very high on priority list, whether it's because they're violent, whether they're off the medication, or a combination of both. So sometimes we have to help these folks right away, versus some that are low priority, we can kind of get to them when we can, right? Again, because of staffing, we do our best trying to prioritize as much as we possibly can, right? Some days are, you know, we're running twelve to fifteen calls, and some days and some weeks are pretty slow. So we're trying to really kind of prioritize that. What you see on your screen is two things. The threat assessment by photo, and really what it is, again, you guys, we have it blocked off for data privacy part of this, as you know, we have four patrol officer areas in our city. And each of those area, like it says on the screen, is a ten area, these are the folks that are very, they're very high priority folks, and we want our officers on the road to know who these guys are and gals, where they live, and what they're all about. So on the right-hand side, you see a mental health advisory form. In that form, Holly actually goes manually and puts this data in. So things like what they do, the do's and the don't, right? What can we say? For example, if, if we know that some of these folks don't want to be touched, we put that stuff in there so the officer that are responding knows, if at all possible, not to make contact, physical contact with those folks. We also know, for example, some of these folks that we've dealt with, they like to talk about basketball. Well, that's important information to know for us when we respond, so we can make that connection, de-escalate situation, and actually take this person safely into custody, or take him to the hospital if need to be. So those are some of the reasons why we have those things. I'm going to turn it over to Holly here in a second to talk about the actual data and statistics behind it. But before I do that, do you, any questions at all?
Councilmember Gustafson?
I, I love this process and that, and I love how we actually have a plan to follow up with people, and it's very important. I guess one of my questions was, how does it work? An officer comes upon a scene, and they realize that there's someone has a mental health issue going on, and it's the first time we've ever encountered this person. What's the process we do to somehow, you know, get in there and, and work with that?
So a couple of things. Our patrol officers are trained in crisis response. All of us went through our crisis respond forty-hour training. We in this group have just a little bit more training than an average patrol officer. But the way we scheduled our hours, we basically know, and, you know, what Holly did for us, is she gave us a heat map. Really what that means is that we know when the major of these calls, or the kind of the meat and potatoes of these calls come out, which is Monday through Thursday between eleven AM and nine PM. So that's the hours we try to work. Because of that statistic, we actually hear, so anytime we hear a crisis call come out, if we're available, we go. So we'll, we'll take a kind of a primary role in that call. For example, yesterday was a call over one of our group homes. We know this person really well, I've dealt with her many, many times, and she was trying to set herself on fire, right? That's when the call came out, and I jumped it, meaning that I got on the call and it went right away, and no problems, right? We made good connection, got on the ambulance, life was good. But patrol officers did assist, which was great, right? We can kind of help each other out, because I was the only one here at that time of day. Does that answer your question?
It does to a point. I've just, again, we end up on a call, we don't know there's a mental health issue, but when we get there, that's when it's the first time we realize there is a mental health issue. How does that get dealt with?
So the, the officers on scene will do their best, right? And again, because of their training, because we do quite a bit of training as an agency, they will, they will take care of that call. But after the fact, what will happen is they will either email us, or do a report, or both, and say, hey, we've dealt with this person, can you guys look into it? And then we kind of take it from there.
Okay. You do more of the follow-up than after the initial contact?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just like what the process that you all have gone through, very thoughtful, even from the beginning on what the name change, really being respectful of people, and really understanding that it's a bigger problem than just mental health, and, and living the values of excellence. So thank you so much, because as people are listening to this, because I'm going to tell people to listen to what's going on here tonight, because then they'll understand how we're addressing it, and how we're doing it in such a respectful way, to ensure that our residents and our guests get the help that they need in a respectful way. So thank you very much. And thank you for all the work that you did prior to this, because it is your passion for trying to address all of this that brings us to where we are tonight. Thank you.
You got it.
Yeah. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, City Manager Masca Lee. My name's Holly Helm. Like they said, I'm the crime analyst for the department, which means I get kind of pulled into anything that's data, statistics, any of that fun stuff within the department. And so obviously, this is a big priority for us. And looking at the data for, both in preparing for standing up the Mental Health or the Behavioral Health Unit and moving forward is, is kind of helping us, it's informing all the decisions to help us prioritize, like Sergeant Yakalov said, and also to understand the impact that we're having moving forward. So I help the unit with, you know, tracking information, creating kind of all of these forms and the, some of the backend spreadsheets and things that help us track things over time to understand the impact that we're having and what's working, and to help inform future decisions. So the next few slides are going to be demographic statistics of the clients that we're dealing with within BHU, and comparing those to the Burnsville population overall. We'd expect the population of the BHU clients to pretty well reflect the population of Burnsville, since mental and behavioral health challenges affect all populations. But this will help us just kind of better understand who is sort of reaching out for help at this point, and what populations may be we might need to reach out to in the future. So you'll see here that this, that there, this is the, the slide on gender. So looking, you know, both the BHU clients and the population of Burnsville are pretty close to fifty-fifty between male and female. We are a little bit more male dominant in the male, in the BHU client side, but nothing really notable there. This next slide is representing the age groups of each population. So the BHU clients are in blue, and the population of Burnsville is in green. And each bar represents the percentage of the overall population that that age range makes up. So for example, the people under fifteen are five percent of BHU clients, and around nineteen percent of the overall Burnsville population. So this easily calls out that the age ranges between fifteen and forty-four years old are sort of disproportionately heavy in our BHU client pool, which makes sense, right? Because young children and the elderly, which make up the smallest proportion, they likely have caretakers, providers, other people sort of helping them with their daily mental and behavioral health needs. So they would represent a smaller pool of who's calling us for resources. I also wanted to point out on this slide that all of these slides represent, our, our unit currently, based on manpower and just sort of what we're able to handle right now, we're very responsive in nature. We're not really able at this point to do much proactive work. So all of these slides about our demographics are really speaking to the population that's calling for help and, and asking for us to come. And, yeah, so we would expect that later on in the future, as we do more outreach and things like that, this could change. This next slide is based on race. So this compares each population here. You'll notice that the white and Asian populations are very similar between the BHU clients and the Burnsville population. And the black population is also very similar, just a little bit smaller in the chart on the right. You'll also notice the chart on the right, the census data uses categories for multiracial and other races, where people are able to select those on the census. And in law enforcement data, we don't track those categories specifically. We have very discrete categories. We do, excuse me, we do have an unknown category, but for our purposes in BHU, we do have them all sort of documented. for our, um, purposes in B H U, we do have them all sort of, um, documented in the categories allowed in our, on our reporting. So, um, it, it stands to reason that the, those that fall into the, um, the biracial or, or multiracial, as it were, and other race categories in the census data, um, if those were sort of fit into the law enforcement categories, it would likely reflect sort of what we're seeing. Um, that's what we would, we would guess anyway. Um, you'll also notice that the Hispanic percentages in, um, B H U and Burnsville are pretty similar as well. And, uh, like I mentioned before, as we move forward, um, as we, uh, are able to expand into more proactive efforts, this could potentially help us identify populations where outreach are helpful, uh, outreach would be helpful. And, um, yeah, so we'll just kind of keep analyzing this as time moves on. So this is a slide about, uh, repeat contacts. So, uh, as Sergeant Yakovlov said, we've had four hundred and thirty-eight contacts from two hundred and seventy-four total clients. So we have an average of one and a half, one to two contacts per person. Um, granted, the unit has been running for six months and so this could change over time. Um, it could be because we're so new or it could be because certain things we're, we're providing, um, are very helpful and we may never hear from some of these folks again. That's something that time will tell. We'll continue to do a lot of this analysis. And I think of course, um, you know, at the one-year mark, it'll be really beneficial to break some of these down by age, gender, race, understand these different things and also to do things like analyzing time between contacts. You know, are we seeing a lot of contacts with, from a person within a week? Or is it, we see them, they're, they're good for a while and then something changes and, and they need help again. It's, it's really helpful, obviously, for us to understand those things as well. So then just a couple of numbers about the operations of the unit. As of midway of twenty twenty-one, Burnsville PD as a whole has spent over six hundred and fifty hours on in-progress mental health calls. Um, so it's about one, one and a half to two man-hours on average per, uh, per crisis call that they respond to. And the B H U has been first responder to a hundred and twenty-three of those crisis calls. They've also conducted three hundred and twenty follow-up visits or calls with these folks and that could range, like Sergeant Yakovlov said, anywhere from thirty minutes to multiple days, even a week, dealing with one particular person, getting them the help that they need. It's very unpredictable and like he said, a lot of the prioritization helps us to determine where that time's going to be spent. And then this is just a quick chart for us to understand, um, in-house, we're also tracking where Sergeant Yakovlov and Officer Houston, um, where they're spending their time. Um, as we stood up the unit, keeping track of what, how they're spending time, uh, responding to crises, crises in progress, following up with, um, those who have had, who have been involved in the calls previously and then miscellaneous hours, which can be anything from taking a phone call or a meeting from a client or their family member to completing paperwork, proactive outreach, you know, meetings and things in-house to sort of check in and see how things are going. So over time, we would expect the miscellaneous time to sort of go down and down. We would love to spend the, the majority of our time doing the crisis response and the follow-up and, um, even to add a fourth category of proactive outreach to continue the education efforts, to continue the outreach efforts. So as time goes on, that's kind of a goal of ours is to, to move in that direction. And I think that is it for the statistics. Does anybody have any questions?
Ms. Helm, no questions, but it's great information because the information you have allows you all to make good decisions and respond to all of this. But it is also very good information that you and Sergeant Akalov has also shared with us. Because as we look to the future, and I know the chief's going to speak to this, is what we need to do as a body that makes decisions about how much more we need to continue to spend to make sure that this unit is well-staffed to meet all of the demands. Because the projected calls that you have presented this evening is more than seven hundred calls, you know? And, uh, you only have a unit of three people, if I am correct in understanding, with, uh, Ms. Johnson helping. But the calls and the need is going to be even more. And so thank you for your work because what you're doing is giving us good information. Data, good data, so we can make good decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Helm.
And then I'll turn it back over to Sergeant Yakovlov for the case studies.
All right. Um, again, so from last time, uh, when we talked, or I said, I should say, Chief Schwartz did, uh, we gave you folks, uh, essentially three or four mini-things that we've done, right? And today, if you guys are okay with it, what I really like to show you is basically kind of a both end of the spectrum of what was going on in our unit since then. So for the first case study, um, I want to point out that this was possible because of Amy and her being actually embedded with us, because if she wasn't here, this case in particular would, never would have worked. Uh, and the reason I say that here is was in the second. So, uh, this particular male, he's a twenty-year-old, uh, male. He was homeless. He was actually living in one of our hotels off of Burnsville Parkway. And our patrol officers kept dealing with this guy because he was just laying in the middle of the grass or on, on Crest on Holiday, if you guys are familiar with that area. Uh, we learned that he was actually schizophrenic. Uh, he was not on his medication. And eventually he got sent to the ridges. Uh, and then that's how we got involved in this. So, uh, the patrol officers, they referred that case to us. Uh, and then through our dealings with them, we learned that, we actually invited him and his mom, it, into our police department. With Amy's help, we're able to realize and learn a few things. Uh, we learned that he's actually a college graduate and his schizophrenia kicked in early in his late teens, early twenties, uh, which we learned, you know, through her. Um, that's pretty much kind of when the onset of schizophrenia comes on. Uh, we also learned that he, he was a Lakeville resident or was at the time and he actually just up and left and went to Texas and Arizona. And in Texas, he was, uh, involved in some significant crisis where he got put in the hospital. And eventually he made his way back to Burnsville. Uh, his folks live in town. Uh, we also learned that because of his medication issue, he didn't have any insurance. He hasn't been on medication for over six months. Uh, he hasn't seen a doctor. He had some issues with his foot. Um, there was some sort of untreated, um, essentially, what would you call it? Essentially kind of a disease going on there and infection. Uh, with her, there, we're able to give him insurance fairly quickly, within a week. Uh, he was put on medication right away. Uh, he was, she was able to get him an appointment with a psychologist and a psychiatrist and we able to find him housing right away. Uh, so none of that would have happened if she wasn't embedded with us because it takes time. And like I said, you know, on average, like I told you earlier, uh, you're looking at an average six to seven months before somebody can actually see a professional. Uh, so that was a good case where our kind of core response actually paid off right away. Questions on that one? So far, so good?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, this next one, um, it was a little longer. Um, and I want to break this one down in, in stages because that's how this call actually came in. So we started dealing with this gentleman actually a year back when COVID was still in the, you know, a thing. And we couldn't really do any proactive follow-up. We couldn't go to his house because we're, we just couldn't, right? Because of COVID. So I talked to him on the phone quite a few times. Uh, and he kept getting the same thing. I'm fine, I'm fine. I don't need any help. His family who lived in Savage, they actually reached out to us as well and said, hey, he really needs help. He lives by himself. He might have a roommate, but he's having a lot of issues. And then that kind of all went away until, uh, recently in June. So this, this guy is forty-eight years old. Uh, paranoid schizophrenic, multiple personalities disorder. Uh, where we learned from family, he has four different personalities. And when we started dealing with them, his violent personality has been with him for the period of two weeks. And the reason we got involved in it because patrol officers and us actually responded to our local churches and mosques because he was going to different places and he called them a soft targets. Really didn't know what that meant. Um, but again, when we start talking with the family and I actually called his sister-in-law and brother, I said, what does that really mean? And they both said the same thing. He's acting out his delusions and that's scary. So because of that, we had some history with him. We invited actually his brother to our office. Uh, and that started at seven in the morning. We said, hey, you need to come meet with us so we can develop a good plan, figure out how to get him safely into custody because he, he was anti-law enforcement. He didn't want any help. Um, so we want to make sure, especially with the new laws that just came out recently, we want to make sure that we don't get ourselves in trouble, but we got to get him the help that he needed. Uh, so his brother actually came into our office, uh, myself and our unit actually sat down with him, closed doors and say, look, we need your help. How do we get this done? And these are some of the things, the process we went through. Um, so family members reached out to us also. Uh, they told us, his brother said that he's escalating his behavior. Um, very intoxicated. He drives drunk on many, many occasions. Uh, they were concerned for actually Amy's safety and our safety going over there because earlier in the year, he attacked his brother with a knife. And he said that he gets really violent and very fast. Um, and those are the things that his brother actually said. Uh, we learned about his relationships. We learned about some of the hazards in the house. Uh, we learned how to calm him down if need to be from his brother. We developed a correspondence action plan. Uh, what that really means to you folks is that we actually had brother go with us and say, hey, you're going to be the point of contact. Uh, you go in there, you have access to his house and trying to get him to come out, we can take him to the hospital. And it went kind of as planned. You know, he got really upset that we were there. Uh, prior to doing that too, as what we called a long-term plan was developed with the hospital staff. So we actually called the head and said, hey, we're going to be bringing this person in. We have a long-term plan in place and we need you guys to hold them, right? And they're like, yep, thumbs up, we're good to go. So the family actually took the lead, um, on the safety. We talked about some of the safety concerns that we had from our point of view. Uh, Amy discussed some of the things that she needed this person to do and we responded to the scene. So we ended up actually taking him into custody safely. Nobody got hurt and we actually rode in the ambulance with him to the hospital. Uh, that's important and what we're learning too is the hospital staff appreciates the fact that we're showing up uh, as a behavioral health unit and we can give them an actual, kind of give them a story and the background and actually what happened versus just writing a piece of paper, uh, that kind of explains what happened. So they appreciate the more compassionate and the more kind of hands-on approach as well. So these are, uh, on your screen, what you see, this is the outcome of it, which I'm very proud of. I'm proud of our team. I'm proud of how we did this. Um, by far the most challenging case so far this year and this is what happened. That's the response from the family. Uh, again, I don't need to read it to you folks, um, but at the end, I think on some level, we saved his life. Uh, I'm sure we prevented at least some sort of, of violence that could have played, taken place at a church or a mosque. And specifically, if we know that he's driving drunk, that could have been really bad. Cause the day prior to that, he got stopped for blowing through a stop sign, I mean, without even slowing down by one of our sergeants. So, uh, again, in my opinion, for what it's worth, I think we did prevent a lot of different things from happening and escalating. Uh, that we, like, the intervention was there and it was perfect. Timing was good.
Yeah.
So those are the two things that I want to kind of give you guys an idea because they're two separate, you know, very different spectrum of cases. Uh, and we have anything in between. That's the, kind of the fun part of the job and the most challenging part of the job as well.
But very difficult cases. When you're dealing with schizophrenia and then with the second case, when you're dealing with multiple personalities and a paranoid schiz, that is very difficult.
Um, scary.
And, and it is scary depending on the personality you're going to encounter. And it's never the same personality that you encounter.
Absolutely.
But you talked about that you were, he was in his angry personality. Uh, and someone who doesn't understand that would not have known how to respond to someone like that. But you have, um, kept the public safe and himself safe. He blew through a stop sign and all of that. So to you and the team and chief, thank you. I mean, the cases you brought in tonight are difficult cases. They're not easy cases. A paranoid schiz and a, and a schiz, and a multiple personality on top of a paranoid schiz is really difficult diagnosis. And I see, uh, Ms. Johnson nodding her head because it is. Because you saved him, he's back on meds. The other is the public. Because depending on what the personality is and what he's doing and he's driving, he, he could have caused harm to not only himself, but others.
Yeah. And, you know, the best part about it is the family was involved in, in this too.
Yes.
So we're able to kind of, like I was telling you guys earlier, is that we're able to kind of get everything, the collaboration between everybody and make a good outcome out of this for sure.
Yeah. Well, it's great that they were close by to help. Yeah, and to do some intervention.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Yep. Chief?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
Wow.
Right? So a lot, a lot there and obviously I'm really proud of the work that they've done. They, they do all the, they do all the hard work and so, um, team effort. I'm really proud. So what's needed for long-term success? I want to talk to you guys a little bit more about that. Um, obviously, we, we launched this behavioral health unit with the existing staff resources that we had at the time because we, we needed to do something. Uh, we didn't, we didn't have any mechanisms in place, but we just know as the calls were going up, we have to, we have to try a different approach. What we've been doing all these years hasn't been working. So, um, the co-responder model, that really brings this value that you hear about to the community, to the families. Um, and so we believe that, and I believe as I listen and I meet with, um, our teams and I see the work that they're doing, that, uh, these units need to be separate. Um, they need to be standalone units. So if you remember, we had the, um, community resource unit. We changed the name, called it Community Engagement and Behavioral Health Unit, but, um, we didn't make them standalone teams. We essentially took all of this work that they're doing and put it onto, um, the work that they were already doing. So now they have two full-time jobs that they're trying to do and it just, um, you know, we're trying to balance out, um, that work. So it's a challenge, you know, we, um, there's some things, you know, take less time and some things take a lot of time. So we're still learning too, as we've just been into it for, for the six months here. But, so I want to talk to you about just increasing staffing and, but these funds that we would need to do this, they're not currently included in the twenty twenty-two budget, um, projection. So I just want, um, to be aware of that. Certainly understand fiscal responsibilities and competing interests and, and everything that we have going on, but just, just want to let you know that. So when I look at how do we do this standalone unit, it's essentially taking, uh, adding another full-time sergeant and then adding the two officers to it. Um, you know, we've done a grant submission. You saw that go through. So we're trying to fund through, um, the COPS hiring grant so we can, um, get some partial monies to do that work. And then, uh, with the work that Holly's been doing, of course, this is added work that, you know, to her job that, um, was not there before. So she is spending a certain amount of hours helping us with that. So I see a need for, um, looking at how we can, um, incorporate a day, a civilian, um, person to help us with this data. And then, of course, as I say, the full-time social worker, I'm still, um, always in communication with Dakota County Social Services, as are many places to say, hey, we, we want more. We want more. We want, uh, Amy to be with us full-time. So, um, they're well aware of that. And, uh, as you know, a lot of discussion going on around, um, the work of this across all the county. So there, a lot of social workers are in need at a lot of places. So, um, but just as we looked at kind of the costs over the last six months, tried to look at, um, Sergeant Yakolov is primarily doing all of this work. So, um, he's doing this almost full-time. We have, um, Officer Houston, who's also doing this work full-time. And, um, I didn't include on here, um, Officer Ben Archambault, who's, is the second officer that's part of the team. Um, he's helping, but we're really trying to just manage community engagement and the work with apartment managers and all that. So he's sort of in between. So I don't have, um, his work included on here. Uh, but with some of the work that Holly's been doing, you know, we're at about a hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five. So it's a lot of resources, a lot of cost, um, into that. And again, these projections don't include everything. Um, that's kind of like just what we're doing right now. It doesn't include getting into being proactive and getting into some of those things that we talked about, uh, through the presentation. So just want to give you sort of a big picture of, of some of the costs there. Um, and then I want to talk about just a little bit more on our continued long-term success because the key to this is really strengthening our co-response. I think this model is working really well. Um, we need the services of our partners in Dakota County. Uh, they provide a lot of information and we just really wouldn't have the successes, uh, that we're seeing. Or to the extent we're seeing without their work. So we want to continue to strengthen that. Uh, but then we also want to work with educating staff, all of our staff across the city. We're partnering with We're partnering with, um, much of our other city departments as it is now. You know, Amber Jacobson and, um, the experience manager, we're doing work with her in parks and outreach. So there's, um, work being done with the fire department and how do we do these transports? And how are we doing patient-centered care? You know, what are we looking at so they have choices and where they want to go so they can get engaged in their own, um, health and wellness? You know, IT is going to, you know, be helping us. We need support from, um, those technologies, HR. So there's, you know, finances helping us with grants. So everybody is really engaged in this work, wants us to be successful. Um, so we need to continue to engage our staff, our families. Families are going to be really key and then community education. So some people don't have families, some people don't have anyone that can help them. So is it a friend, is it a neighbor? Um, who can they count on and how do we connect all of these folks, uh, to these resources that, um, we now have access to? So we also want to look at how do we get proactive and bring in this and have client-based group education for folks on coping skills and self-help? And so, you know, to really get proactive in that. Um, and then long-term, we think about, and this is in Holly's mind, her analytical mind, but, you know, a data dashboard implementation, sort of that one-stop shop for, um, all information on mental health and what that looks like, you know, we just don't even know for sure right now because we're still developing everything. But, um, the main thing is that could help us meet individual needs, right? And have those safe and successful interactions. So that's kind of the big picture of what we're looking at. I just want you guys, all of you to know that staff are really passionate about this work. We're working behind the scenes, we're problem solvers. They're, I say we, but they're the ones doing all the problem solving when they're out there. But, um, lots of stuff goes on behind the scenes to make this work, uh, successful. And so I've appreciated your willingness to listen to us and to just, um, hear what we're having to say and and be part of our success that we've had so far and hopefully, um, continue that in the future. So again, this really ties into who we are, our culture, who we are as a city, but as a police department and that outreach we want to have, so.
Yeah.
Um, with that, I will stand for questions and if we have questions for the group, we can answer those too.
We have some questions, but chief, your success is our success and it's also the community's success. So I stand with what you need to have, uh, to make the, this unit successful and move forward. Councilmember, uh, Keely.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, first and foremost, uh, I'm, I'm very proud to be a part of a city where our police department took the initiative to really put these, create this resource out of what you are already working with to respond to the data. Um, and, you know, I am always going to be supportive of our public safety departments getting the tools necessary to deal with what you deal with because nobody in any other line of work other than maybe military deals with the types of circumstances thrown at you as, uh, our, our, both our police and fire have to deal with. But even more so police because you're walking into circumstances that you have no idea the gravity in many cases, what you're actually walking into. And we hear the stories around the country and, um, you know, uh, thank goodness we have a community-based policing department that has built a relationship with our community that, um, it really is a tremendous asset and it goes back before your time. But I know that you're doing a fabulous job keeping that going. My first question is, when did the mental health, behavioral health, apologize, calls? How many years ago did they become something where the department began trying to better deal with it? You know, using what you had noted early on, we've tried different things and they weren't working, so we went to this. But when did that, uh, when did the activity demand some a, some attention where where the department was in fact trying some different things?
Yeah, I think it was really last year is when we really just started this work. I mean, we, the only thing we ever had before this was just people call 911, re-respond. We go out there, the officers do it, kind of that second piece to Councilmember Gustafson, what you were saying is like, wow, what do we, what happens when these guys aren't around? That's, it's just, we're responding, they're doing the best they can with the tools that they have. Um, people are getting transported and many times they're out and back without any services. And then we're doing that over and over again. But I would say, you know, over the last couple of years, we we definitely have s- been feeling the pressure of like, these calls are just taking so much time and they're taking so much resources. And, um, how do we get people the services that they need? Because they're not getting it because we're going back and we're going back and we're going back. And of course, as we look at things, um, you know, just with police accountability and tragedies that happen and, um, officer-involved shootings, if there's, um, you know, someone that is experiencing, uh, mental health or mental illness or something like that that's going on. You know, as you heard, there's, uh, serious safety concerns in some of these cases. And so we're trying to just really look at how can we do things differently and to, um, mitigate as much as we can, any tragedy that that could happen. And so how do we get people to recognize, hey, these, I talked to this person before? You know, and we're doing this between 11 and 9, you know, several days during the week, but this stuff happens 24/7. And so, um, but I think what's great about the work that we're doing is we're, we're trying to do something because I think if you get, this is a huge issue, right? And you could think it and go over it and try to find the perfect thing and there isn't a perfect framework for it. So something has to, um, happen. So I think probably over the last couple of years, we really noticed the need to try to look at it different.
Where it became.
Yeah.
Such a much bigger thing that some, some real structural change needed to happen like this horse. You've been on, uh, in our department for a very long time. Um, prior to the last couple of years, there were clearly mental health, uh, or behavioral health calls, but they were treated or handled the way, right? W- without the having the tools that you have today, right? So the calls date back.
Right.
Uh, but in the last couple of years, uh, even pre-pandemic, it became.
Yes, and.
Far more explosive in growth in the number of behavioral health types of calls, right?
Right. With the pandemic as well, but also just, I think, as it has become, you know, more open and people are encouraged that this is, um, it is okay to, you know, not be okay or to have, um, a situation in your life where you're not feeling like you can handle things. Like we all go through those sort of things. And, um, so I think more and more people have been reaching out, maybe more and more families just kind of get to their wits' end at the end of like, I can't, we can't do this another day. You know, there's some of that. And so I think it's a combination of things, but definitely through the pandemic, you know, it's just, that's a lot on people. I think we'll be seeing those, um, you know, that impact more in the years to come. I mean, I don't even think we fully realize, you know, the impacts that, you know, that isolation can have on folks. Um, also, you know, people that are victims of domestic violence, that more extreme isolation and then, um, so I think, I think this, it just kind of crosses over all of the work that we're doing. And so how do we, how do we just look at it different and try to get, what do they need in that moment in time? And can we pr- provide that to them with a coordinated and collaborative effort?
Quick follow-up.
Yeah.
Um, what you're proposing is more of a structural change for a long-term. Do you, based on all your resources, uh, your peer groups talking about this? I'm sure they're, uh, all talking about this. Um, you just touched on it, you foresee some tails to the impact of the pandemic. Um, and then, uh, is there any predictions that the demand for this, uh, mental health? Sorry, I can't get that term out of my head. Uh, behavioral health unit, um, which I I understand the ask, I certainly do, um, is going to be really a permanent part of the department where the demand may never actually recede. It it may just grow over time. Um, and, uh, and so you believe this is a structural change that needs to happen within your, your org chart as far as.
Yeah.
Increasing this department's support, staffing, et cetera, uh, to really set us up to be able to handle what continues to come in the future.
Right. Because I think that co-responder, that embedded model of having social workers and partnering with all the people that can be impacted in this. And it requires police to be involved too. Lots of times, depending on who you ask, right, there's lots of passionate conversations about this. Some people don't want police involved, some people want, there is a space for police to be involved in this because there is public safety to be concerned about. And, um, we want to be a good partner, we want to be at the table, we want to do this. So I do see this as always something that police are going to be responding to. There's also a, you know, a place where maybe police don't respond. Maybe there's, you know, a separate way where calls are coming in, you know, there's a lot of discussion. Do we need to have calls routed that aren't a crime, that aren't a public safety threat? That are just like, hey, I don't want the police, but I want to talk to, I need more services, right? So that's where the experts of Dakota County Social Services come in. So is there a space for them to be handling some things with us being more of like, hey, we'll, we'll go and we're there for you if if something, you know, if you need help. But, um, you know, it's not a crime to not take your medication. So why are we showing up there and going into someone's home and doing those things? It's not a crime, um, you know, to to be suicidal. It's not a crime, you know, but is there a public safety threat? Is there help that we can provide? That is not, we're not social workers, but we want to help, we want to be part of the solution. So I do see it as something that there's always going to be a space for police to be involved. And, um, so yes, I see it on our org chart for the future.
There's a, just a quick side story. There's an episode early in the season of Blue Bloods. Um, I think it was from late January because of the, the ads before, I I just watched the recording of it a couple of days ago and it was, I think it was talking about the Super Bowl. But they addressed, and that's what I love about that show, is they really take on today's issues in law enforcement. And they had one where they had a, um, a behavioral health specialist accompany two officers to a call. And, uh, and they first showed an example of how it can work great when they were able to de-escalate. Uh, and 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 the two officers, uh, you know, just it, it what, you know, they handled those types of calls, but they never had this, uh, behavioral health specialist with them. And then later on in the show, that same address has another call in. And this was a teenager with a certain disease, behavioral and, um, and it, and it got, it escalated, it got more violent. And so it showed what can happen in a, in a bad way where that behavioral health specialist got too close, tried to connect with the person and then they snapped and, and so, uh, they had to inter- intervene to suppress him and and type of thing. So they, it was, and they were talking about it, uh, in their post-report, like this was a city council authorized test and they wanted to see if it could help, uh, with our officers. And they, so they showed a, an early success and then they showed, well, there's also risk. And so it's clearly, uh, it it's, you know, in those, in that circumstance, and that's just a TV show, obviously. But it exemplified the types of things that could happen and that there's a place for law enforcement, to your point, in this process, along with the behavioral specialists to be able to, uh, better serve the needs and de-escalate and the pro, and get the appropriate services to the circumstances. Um, and avoid that revolving door of just, right, taking them in, taking them to the hospital, then they're right back out.
That's where all that cross-training kind of comes in, you know, and that's, you know, where we need to get where, you know, I know Amy ha- has a different mentality as a social worker as to when she's on scenes. That's very different from, you know, Sergeant Max responding and, you know, very concerned about her, um, safety. So, you know, we don't, when she's with us, we don't let her just, you know, go, um, we do this stuff together. So we have to do that cross-training, which is really important. So yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gustafson.
Uh, thank you for the presentation, it was really enlightening. I'm very impressed with what we're doing with what we have right now. And I, and I certainly understand your asking what goes on. Uh, I I I firmly believe in a strong behavioral health system within our country. I mean, for so many years, the funding for mental health and or behavioral health, like Dan, I, I can remember that for a while. But it's gone down. And we've used our jails and our prisons to deal with people that have these issues and they're not equipped for that either. And I like the fact that we're looking at, starting to deal with it at least at a local level to start to intervene early on before they get into the situation where you may end up in jail or you may end up in prison and that sort of thing. And, and I just hope that at some point, the county and the state and the feds will start looking at, looking at this as a real big issue in this country and they need to fund it because people need help. We just came, we're coming through this pandemic where a lot of people have a whole lot of time to be in their homes and closed up. And I can tell you, as, uh, my wife and I were foster parents for 15 years and summers were the worst time because that's when the families were together and they didn't get away from each other. And that's when the really bad behavior began and a lot of things happened that way. So I applaud you for for putting this together and I I think we're going in the right direction. And I'm glad as a city, we're recognizing it as well, that we can't just keep saying, well, the county takes care of that issue. We have to be, we have to be part of that solution as well. And so, uh, no question, just a statement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Councilmember Schultz.
Yes, I I like how this program is going. I'm very pleased with the structure of how you're, how you're laying it out. In, in perhaps this is a time, um, but this is in our city manager's purview, that we do look at, you know, not just this section, but maybe this is the opportunity to really delve into how, how we have our police department structured and, you know, how we allocate resources within it and and that type of thing. And, you know, Burnsville Police has always been like right on, right on the leading edge, like all the time. And on this, you're on the leading edge again. And I, and I, I think that this, this could be an opportunity, um, for you to reimagine. Like if you wanted, like you didn't have to look at old structures, right? If you wanted to reimagine what the police department for Burnsville would be, what would that be? Like if you could have a magic wand and redo that, this might be the, the time and the opportunity to really look at that, you know, I mean, in amongst all of your spare time.
Um, yes.
And then, you know, another question I have is, so you have police and you're integrating county services. Are we also integrating our fire department into this sense?
Yep.
And would they be formally integrated into it? What would that look like? You know, so that's a, a question that I have on that because that's a valuable arm of our, our city services that we have. And and I know you work really, really great with our chief and there's a lot of already close interaction, but maybe that's formalized within this group. Um, and then my other question is, and I know that this is one-time use funds, but, uh, is this something that we can use COVID funds for?
Yep. It's allowable. City Manager Lee.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. There's a lot of flexibility with the, um, ARPA funds with regards to mental health, disparate impacts, public safety. So, um, yeah, there, there's probably some flexibility there, just operational versus one-time, so.
Right. Right. Thank you.
Yeah. And and chief, you and City Manager Lee have known, uh, the work that I've been doing with the U.S. Conference of Mayors, along with the National Police Chiefs around reimagining public safety. And of course, I reported on the work that, uh, we're doing here with regard to our, um, behavioral health unit. Uh, and we're putting, that we have it in place in, in January when others are all were still because it was May when, uh, the National Police Chiefs and the U.S. Conference of Mayors came together to try and reimagine public safety within the whole United States and what that would look like. And I think I sent some of that. And one of the things is that corporate America is looking and saying, we'd like to be part of this. As I shared with you and City Manager Lee, that Target wants to, uh, put, um, grants on the table for U.S. Conference of Mayors and the chiefs, uh, to look at how they're going to reimagine and get into this whole space of behavioral health. And, um, I'm so proud of what you and our team are doing because we have been. And that's because you all focus on the core values of excellence and courage and moving forward. And so I'm so proud of the work that you're doing and I know that you need more people. So as I've shared with you and City Manager Lee, I'm going to help see where we can find, uh, more money. But yes, I know because I've looked at what, uh, ARPA funds, uh, what is eligible and this is eligible. And there are other funds available also. So we'll just make sure that, um, you're well-staffed and equipped because this isn't going to go away. And just listening to the cases that you're doing, they're difficult cases. They're just not your garden variety, uh, behavioral health cases. You're dealing with schizophrenia and multiple personalities. It's a difficult, long-term, difficult cases. And, and the co-responder model, thank God that they're there. But the, the difficulty also is that they take their meds. I mean, I've gone on, on calls with fire and also with police where people don't take their medication and then they find themselves in a very difficult position, whether that has to do with diabetes or anything else. whether that has to do with diabetes or anything else.
Right.
Yeah.
It could be a lot of underlying different medical things going on with folks. And that is why we do work with the fire department and trying to figure out like, where is that space for the fire department and us to work together? And I know Max has already done quite a bit of work with that. I've been talking with Chief BJ and we're trying to figure out what is the best, um, place for that or how will these calls be routed and how can we, you know, utilize them in the best way? Because again, their resources are being used for transports. And are there different ways we can transport, you know, in unmarked vehicles? So there's not that, hey, an ambulance shows up at your house and there's that stigma. We're really trying to reduce the stigma that comes with some of this work. But I think, like I said, more, more and more people are calling and I think that's, that's a good thing too. But it just, you know, it requires a lot of work, so.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
City Manager Lee, you had a comment?
Um, I would defer to the council if there's any other further comments tonight.
No. This was so good. The information you shared is not only good for us, but good for the community to know what we're dealing with. And I applaud you and everybody. And Ms. Helm, y- your data goes back 10 years on these mental health calls. So we've known about it. And I believe one of the times that you were before us, you talked about it. So, you know, it may have been COVID that just pushed it way up into the priority list. But you've been dealing with it. And Sergeant Yakalov, you've been dealing with it for the last five years, if I remember one of your, and so you just kept seeing the increase of these calls. So, but now we have a plan and we have a, um, a model and a methodology and we're still learning. So thank you. And thank you for your heart and understanding that this was something that we needed to focus on. So, uh, we have a great team. Please extend our deep appreciation and gratitude to everybody, to, to the team that's before us this evening. Thank you for all your good work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Members of the council, there are no other items to come before us this evening. And a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Schultz makes the motion, second by Councilmember Keely. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. And a motion carries. Good night and thank you for being with us and thank you very much, chief. And chief, thank you.
Thank you.